Father God, we are grateful to be here together. We're grateful for these citizens in our community who care and who want to make Rome and Floyd County better. And God, we just ask that you give us wisdom and discernment as we make decisions to do just that, and we hope these decisions ultimately glorify you. God, we pray for those who serve to protect us, both here and around the world. And God, we know there's a lot of sadness and sickness and struggles in our community, and we pray for those who are doing so. And God, I pray for all of this, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight? Hearing and seeing none, it stands as submitted, and we'll move on with that. We have public participation tonight. Have several people that would have signed up to speak. When I call your name, if you would come to the microphone and speak directly into the microphone, you'll have three minutes. If you would give us your name, your address, and the subject matter you're addressing, we would appreciate it. So the first meeting is Ms. Evans.
Good evening. Mary Evans, 284 David Road, Rome, Georgia. I had come requesting to play a video, and Ms. Harmon said we will have to wait till next meeting to play that video. I want to appreciate you all. I especially appreciate your prayer. I'm deeply aware that there is a lot going on in our country right now, and try as we might to pretend like the same thing is not going on here. It absolutely is. Yeah, a lot of sadness, a lot of pain, a lot of sickness, a lot of deception, and my prayer is we are at the precipice of this turning around and reclaiming our country and also exposing anything that needs to be exposed. So I appreciate you all for being here and for allowing us the opportunity to be here as well. Thank you.
Angela Rabino, 1410 Kingston Highway. I know I'm the first to give you guys grief all the time. I just want to say thank you, though, honestly. I went to a city commission meeting last night, and there's a huge difference in the way things are done. And the way we do it here is, I enjoy it, that we can come out here and say our piece without having to sign up and, you know, tell you what we're going to talk about, and we could just come up here and do it freely. So thank you for that. But I will say that it's sad how different it is, and it's like we're in two separate places, and I've mentioned that at our last meeting. It's like really being in two separate worlds, so I'm hoping at some point we come together, because it's really sad. But thank you for everything, guys.
Is Ted Buckingham, is that correct?
Hey, my name is Ted Buckingham, and my address is 10 Royal Oaks Drive. And I want to begin by thanking all of you for allowing me to speak with you this evening. I have been a Floyd County resident since 1996 and have lived in Emerald Oaks subdivision off of Old Dalton Road since July of 2018. Since the neighborhood was created, dozens of local crews brought in materials and dump trucks, concrete trucks, and 18-wheelers for the construction of over 90 homes without significant incident. That's 90 homes over the course of 15 years without a single instance of running over curbs, driving over lawns, knocking over mailboxes, oil spills, crushing drain covers, damaging road signs, or damaging streetlights. Then, in March of 2021, Smith Douglas Homes came to town and managed to do all of the things I just mentioned, all within a single year. And I want to present to you just a few of the 20-plus examples of those instances that we, as a neighborhood, have been forced to deal with. So my son, Super Helper over here, is going to pass out some photographs.
Thank you, Tyler.
Now, the map in your envelope has numbers that correspond to the list I've given you describing the damage of the particular location. Note the numbers on the photographs correspond to the numbers on the map as well. Here are a few highlights. There are 18 stop signs in our subdivision. Of those, nine have been damaged. Only two stop signs in our neighborhood remain undamaged in a path that Smith Douglas routinely travels. There are nine storm drains in our neighborhood that are located on a corner. Of those, six have been damaged, and only one storm drain remains undamaged in a location where Smith Douglas routinely travels. There are 15 intersections where a driver must make a right or left-hand turn. Of those 15 intersections, 12 have been driven over, causing damage to the curb and the yard of the property owner. The three remaining that have not yet been damaged are on the north end of our neighborhood where Smith Douglas is yet to begin construction. The most frustrating aspect of this whole situation is that the damage could have been avoided, and future damage could be avoided if the drivers of the trucks would take a few more seconds to maneuver their trucks around the turn the correct way. I know this because I have observed and have on video instances of the same trucks carrying oversized loads, going through the same spots you see in the photographs, and staying on the road. Just scan the QR codes on your sheet if you would like to see those videos. Since my time is limited, I just want to make sure that I convey to you that I hope that you can assure me, the residents of Emerald Oaks, and all of Floyd County citizens the following. One, you will assist us in putting an end to the negligent and apathetic driving habits of Smith Douglas and their subcontractors. Second, you will assure all citizens of Floyd County and Smith Douglas that Smith Douglas will be held financially responsible for all repairs in conjunction with the damages that they have caused, and not pull out of the taxpayer's pocket to pay for the repairs. Thank you for your time.
I'm having a little difficulty reading the next name, but you live at Seven English Oaks. Apologize to you for that. Your writing is next to mine.
My name is Chase Garrisco. I live at Seven English Oaks, although also about the roads in Emerald Oaks. I haven't been here as long as Ted. I moved here in 2020 from Louisiana. When we were moving here, we wanted to buy into a neighborhood where kids could meet people, be able to play in the road and stuff, and go, you know, ride their bikes, do scooters and stuff. And you can see Ted did a really good job. I won't go too much into the damage of the road, because Ted documented that, but this was in April of 2020. My wife's on roller blades, my kids are barefoot, eating popsicles, just playing, enjoying the road. And today, this is what it looks like in front of that same house. It's terrible. I couldn't even get out of my driveway. The bumper of my wife's car was hitting. We're having to cut through the yard just to exit the driveway. My truck running boards were scraping on it. And I've talked to multiple people in Public Works, and they've been really responsive, and I appreciate that. It was Mr. Waters, Mr. Skeen, even talked to Mr. Ivy, Bruce Ivy, and they come out within a day or two days. And this, I mean, I appreciate what they do, and I appreciate that I can leave my driveway now, but this is what's in my yard and my driveway right there. Just slag. It's not in potholes, it just sits in the road. You can't walk dogs, you can't roll...
Shit, what is that? I couldn't see it. Just a crumbled up road? The gravel?
As I said, that's filling in potholes, but the second there's like a rain and a washout, it's everywhere. It goes up in my driveway. I know people in here have like golf carts, and there's a lot of us in here tonight that can't even like drive, they don't even want to come by that side, and this is right in the entrance of the neighborhood. Almost everybody has to go through it, and I've kind of caught the brunt of it being where my house is, and it's frustrating. What I'm asking is, and what I've been told is, in two years, when Smith Douglas is out, they'll fix this issue, but my kid's four when this started. She'll be eight years old by the time this is all said and done. I don't want to have to not be able to sit in my front yard and watch my kids be able to enjoy their scooters, their roller skates, and all that. We went last night, my kid wanted to go roller skate, we had to go to the other side of the subdivision just to be able to enjoy our neighborhood. We don't want to have to wait two years for this to be fixed. We want it to be done sooner rather than later. There was about 100 dump trucks that came down my house today, and I'm not even exaggerating. It would be nice if there was an entrance for them to go through where they're not going through the main entrance, and Ted shows you. It looks like we don't want to take care of our subdivision when you pull into it. It's just everything's tore up, the median, they ran over bushes. So that's all I just wanted to address. I thank y'all for listening.
Mary Blair.
Hey, my name is Mary Blair. I am a part of the Emerald Oaks subdivision. I live at 28 Royal Oaks Drive, lifelong resident of Rome. I have lived at Emerald Oaks for almost 15 years, and we knew that as the neighborhood was going to be developed, we knew it would increase in size. However, when told Simpler Right was building, we had no issues with roadways or damage or anything like that, but when Smith Douglas started coming in, we did start noticing, you know, a lot more damage and things. I do understand our roads are not built to withhold the heavy equipment coming through. I do get that, you know, it's difficult to drive an 18-wheeler through a subdivision, manage these turns like they do. However, it does seem like they have gotten a little careless with it. Last year, we had two of the Smith Douglas representatives approach us as we were cleaning out our building, getting ready for a garage sale, and they came up talking about damage on the side of the road, and we were like, what are you talking about? And he said, well, there's damage on the side of your road. So we went and looked, and one of the drivers had come up into the yard, and he said, we'll get somebody out here to fix it, we'll tend to it. They never came. They were mostly just doing the damage control, in my concern, because they mostly kept saying, did you see who did it? Do you know who did it? Did you see who did it? And we're like, well, no, we're busy doing other stuff. So they never came to do it, so my husband had to saturate the side yard and flatten it out. The other thing is, is we are on the corner, catty corner from the Smith Douglas home office. So because we're on the corner, we do get a lot of turns from the 18-wheelers. Our drain ditch is sunken in, it's broken tremendously. We have a sprinkler head on the corner. We keep watching periodically, because my concern is, as they continue to, you know, accidentally go over this, if that sprinkler head gets broken, are they going to fix it? Because we're not driving a vehicle over it, they are, or their contractors are. So I think the main thing is, we just want to make sure, are they going to take responsibility for any of the damage that they've done? And like Chase was talking about, the front entrance of the subdivision is a mess. It looks like somebody has four-wheeled through it. But I think we just want to make sure that they will be accountable for, you know, things that they have done. Thank you.
How are you doing? I'm Tony Wright. I'm also with the Emerald Oaks subdivision. I live at 12 English Oaks subdivision. We just wanted to come and come before you guys and just let you know what is going on out there. I'm sure that you're aware of it, but we have other people in the subdivision who are actually trying to sell their homes also. And when the people are coming to look at your home, they turn into the entrance there, and they're, what kind of subdivision is this? Do I want to live in this? Do I want to purchase this home? So I want to try to give some fixes to the problem. I know up on Painter Road, I don't know if they can come in off Painter Road and have a construction entrance coming into the back part of the subdivision where they're doing their work, instead of coming into our main entrance right there where it is hard for 18-wheelers to turn. I am a building inspector over in Adairville. We had this same issue come up with one of our subdivisions, and we actually pulled their permits. We halted their building until they could fix this road, fix the damage that they had done. We issued no more permits. They couldn't build on the lots that they had, and within a month, they came out and fixed the entire road. It was $125,000 to fix what they tore up, but they come out and got it done. And I say, is there anybody else here from Emerald Oaks that's not going to speak? So we just know that there's other people here that are not going to speak. We recognize them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We appreciate all of you folks from the Emerald Oaks subdivision being here. We're well aware of this, and we discussed it in caucus tonight. We have some plan of attacks that we're going to try to put in place to see if we can't get this rectified. Sorry this happens, it would be, Tony, I'm sure you would like this too. If all subdivisions could develop from the back to the front, it might be a different situation, but we can't specify that. But we're very aware of what you're talking about. We appreciate all of you being here and presenting your facts and figures in a polite, concise way, and we are, we're going to figure this out with your help. So thank you very much for being here.
Mr. Chair, I might add, I've had communications with Mr. Buckingham. There's some enforcement activities already underway. Ted, if I can communicate through you and you could share with the community, that'd be awesome. I assume y'all have got contact info, but I expect some answers actually tomorrow on some of this. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, we have one more person signing up to speak, is David Smith, would like to speak for a minute.
I think I've got this time to three minutes this time. David Smith, 2107 Burahalo. It's nice to see everyone again this evening. I just want to take a moment to thank you for the work that you do. It's a big responsibility to serve the community, as you all do, and I appreciate the time and effort that you put into it. I'm not here to be overly critical or make enemies, make things difficult, but there's a couple of things that I feel require more attention. The first, not surprisingly, are the issues pertaining to our elections that we've been discussing. I appreciate the work that was done to get the new election board in place. That was a great first step. There's still a lot of discussion in the community, though, about when we will have some real answers and accountability for what was allowed to take place here in 2020. We must remember, this wasn't an isolated incident. It was part of a much bigger plan across our state as well as nationally, and to ignore that fact only helps to protect those responsible for perpetrating this fraud on the American people. To my knowledge, no members here have taken a position either individually or as a body and stated on the record that there is strong evidence to suggest the results of the 2020 election are in question, or stated that much of the community that you serve have serious concerns. It does us no good to push our local state reps on the issue when our county commission hasn't publicly acknowledged the problem. It would have more of an impact on our state reps if members of our county commission here would join with us in calling for an investigation. I also have a hard time understanding some of the endorsements for Governor Kemp in spite of his failure to deal with the election issues in any meaningful way while continuing to, and he continues to insist that the Dominion system is completely secure when cybersecurity experts around the world expose really every week, every day, more and more vulnerabilities, not just with Dominion, but with all electronic voting systems. And I have here some, an example of some of this work that's been done by these experts, many of which are former military intelligence people. This list here is a list of security breaches in most of the counties in Georgia on the night of November 3rd and 4th, 2020. In Floyd County alone, there was a hack that targeted specifically the Floyd County election supervisor, and it originated from Michigan. And I have here on this, on these pages, the IP addresses, the GPS coordinates, and other details that can all be checked out and verified. This is the case. It shows here that there were 3,434 votes flipped from one candidate to the other just in Floyd County. We deserve some answers on this. It's completely unacceptable, even if this is all true, as I feel that it is. I know there are limitations as to what you can do as county commissioners, but you have the authority, I would think, to call for an investigation of some kind to look into what took place here in our county. If none of this is true, it would be a good thing for our country, and then some of the claims made by some of our friends on the other side of the room may be justified. If, on the other hand, more regularities are uncovered and the machines are compromised, we should know that sooner rather than later, so that we can fix it and restore trust in the system for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of our January 11 meeting as they were distributed? Seeing and hearing none, those stand approved as presented. We have no special recognitions tonight, no proclamations. We have one first reading, and that's to adopt a resolution of Floyd County, Georgia, to approve the adoption of timber harvesting ordinance. That is on first reading tonight, and there will be a public hearing on that at our next meeting. We have several, in fact, we have eight public hearings tonight, so it's going to take some time. And I'd like to go over the rules of our public hearings. All of these come from, I believe all of them come from the Planning Commission with recommendations to us for action. When we open, Art will give us a report from the Planning Commission on each individual item, and then we will open the public hearings. The people speaking in favor will have up to 10 minutes, that's cumulative 10 minutes, and the people speaking in opposition will have 10 minutes. At that time, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll call on Commissioner Maxi, who is our representative on the Planning Commission, to give us a motion that we can either, can discuss and take action on at that time. So Art, I'll ask you to start in and just go one through eight.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and Mr. Manager. The first item that we have is a request for a special use permit to use an existing structure for personal storage and to store lawn service equipment for property at 135 Wax Road, Floyd County. This is tax parcel K17010. This is currently zoned suburban residential, and the applicant owner is Mr. Chris Goodwin. Mr. Chair, just to give a little background on a past application that's similar and some staff conditions that we have for your consideration. In November 2004, the Planning Commission and Floyd County Commission approved a similar development for H&amp;H Lawn Care on Old Calhoun Road. The special use permit was approved with multiple conditions aimed at maintaining the residential character of the area, such as the existing house on the property would remain as a residence, the side lot lines being, the rear of the house would have a 10-foot buffer, the rear lot lines would have a 25-foot buffer, and the development shall be subject to an approved site plan. To that end, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, the staff recommends approval of this application based on the following conditions. The principal use of the property will remain residential, and accessory commercial use will remain behind the residential dwelling as required by the Unified Land Development Code. There will be no signage to indicate a business is present. The applicant will provide a more detailed site plan showing the dimensions, including the distances from the property lines. The approval will be contingent upon the more detailed site plan, and a vegetative buffer shall, that visually screens the building and equipment, vehicle storage will be maintained on the sides of the building as well as the frontage along Rockmark Highway. Laura, can you run that? Thank you. So that was the application bring rate. Just to give a point of reference, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this property is near the intersection of Rockmark Highway and Highway 101 and Wax Road. If you're familiar with the Silver Creek Pharmacy, there's a store right there, and then the Mexican restaurant is on the opposite side of the street, just to give a point of reference. So you can see it's a fairly large piece of property that's outlined in red. Thank you, Laura. Here's a zoning map. So the property is currently zoned suburban residential, which is that pale yellow color. The pink color, Commissioners, is community commercial, and Lawn Care is permitted as a special use permit under suburban residential. And here's looking into the property. So this is the home of the owners, and you see one storage building or shed in the middle, and if you look toward the rear, that is the building that will be primarily used. Thank you, Laura. And then this is looking across the street, and then this is looking up Wax Road, and then this is, I zoomed, I tried to zoom in a little bit so you can see the building a little better. That's in the rear. And then that's just another shot right there. Here's the site plan that was provided to us outlining the existing structures and the proposed buffers and so on. And, sorry, this is turned, but this is a general schematic of the structure. And the considerations for the special use permit, these were provided by the applicant. And then this is going into the application itself. And this, again, has a recommendation from the staff for approval with those conditions. Mr. Chair, it also has a recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission with those conditions as well.
Thank you very much, Art.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
We'll now open the public hearing on this item, and if there are people here who would like to speak in favor of this proposal, you can come to the microphone and please give us your name and address.
My name's Chris Goodwin. 135 Wax Road is my property, and I guess the only thing I have to say in addition to all the conditions he said is, property does sit 800 feet off the road. There's a buffer on all four sides of it. I'm going to a lot of trouble to improve the property, farm fencing, and this is being built like a barn, nice paint, it's not just like a metal building. So we're improving it and putting wood siding on it. Any parking that's done will be done behind it purposefully to hide any, anything that would appear to have any kind of business use at all. Again, it's my property, and I have, have a, you know, a desire to keep everything looking nice too. So no, the property I'm at now, I've been at for 12 years, I haven't, I've never had a customer on site. We don't operate a retail business or anything. It's just, just to have all my equipment at and be able to, you know, move in and out of it. So I guess nobody has any questions. That's all I've got.
Thank you very much. Is anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the proposition? If not, are there those who would like to speak in opposition? Seeing and hearing none, we will close the public hearing, and I'll ask Commissioner Maxi for a motion on this item.
I'd like to recommend conditional approval of this property. Art, would you go over the conditions? Again, I think it remains like a residential structure, okay?
Yes, sir. The principal use of the property will remain residential, and accessory commercial use will remain behind the residential dwelling as required by the ULDC. There will be no signage to indicate a business is present. The applicant will provide a more detailed site plan showing the dimensions, including the distances from the property lines. The approval will be contingent upon the more detailed site plan. A vegetative buffer that visually screens the building and equipment, vehicle storage will be maintained on the sides of the buildings as well as the frontage along Rockmark Highway.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Your motion stand?
I'll make this form a motion, conditional approval based on those conditions. It's going to...
Second.
Continue. Look. Like a home.
Right. Thank you very much. The motion from Commissioner Maxi is to approve this request with the conditions listed by Art, and the second is by Commissioner Waters. Is any further discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Last year, Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. That is approved. Art, item two.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The next item we have is item Z11, excuse me, Z211101, which is requesting rezoning from suburban residential to agriculture residential for property located at 1879 Pleasant Valley Road and 1934 Pleasant Valley Road, Silver Creek, 30173, Floyd County Tax Parcels L17138 and L16240. The applicant owner is Ms. Janice Hopkins in the state of James Gribble. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, a brief property description. This is a rezoning to allow for the development of a family gathering place on land, which currently has livestock on the property. We'll go through that, and I'll show you a couple maps and some pictures. Thank you, Laura. So this is the property located on Pleasant Valley Road. You can see the parcels outlined in red. The, again, the pale yellow color is suburban residential. You can see... You can see across the way there, the lighter green color is AR, agricultural residential. The property has traditionally been used as an agricultural endeavor. However, when zoning was applied, it did get a suburban residential category. The request is for the family to be able to have a gathering spot for reunions and gatherings and so on and everything, and this would be a structure that would not have a primary structure along with a house, if you will. This would be just a gathering spot for the family. And per the ULDC, there has to be a principal structure there, a house, if you will, before there's an accessory structure. And with the livestock that's currently, I think we have some pictures, we'll show in a second, the staff felt that the rezoning was appropriate. Thank you, Lauren. So here is looking, this is one of you looking in one direction of Pleasant Valley. You can see it's mostly wooded in that general vicinity. Thank you. And then again, and then where the planning truck is located right there, if you see a fence line right there, there are actually goats on the property right now, and I think maybe some other animals, too. Thank you, Lauren. And then this is looking into the property. So if you look to the left, you can see the top of a shed right there, and the goats are kind of housed there. And there they are. And then this is looking across the street, and then this is going to be the application. Mr. Chairman, this request has a unanimous recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission, and the staff also recommends approval.
Thank you very much, Art.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Maxey, we have a motion on item two.
We got a public hearing first.
We need to open the public hearing, my fault. We'll open, and those that would like to speak in favor of this proposal, feel free to come to the microphone.
My name is Janice Hopkins. I live at five Stone Gable Drive, and I'm here requesting this rezoning for my family property. This is 35 acres out in the country that's been in my family since 1917 and passed down through the generations. And we have a wonderful area out by the creek there, Spring Creek, that my family has always used for birthdays and reunions and picnics and all sorts of things. So it's real special to our family. And it was interesting to find out, when I went down to the offices, to find out what kind of permit I needed to have an accessory building there. When you're kids, you don't really think about the luxuries, but as adults, we would like to have a bathroom and some electricity out there and some storage for our supplies that we use when we're out there. So it was, it was surprising to me to find out that this country acreage was actually zoned as suburban residential. And the number one rule for that is that you can't have an accessory building on suburban residential property if there's not a primary residence already there. So we did, years ago, my great-grandparents had a farmhouse and a barn, and the farmhouse has long, long since gone away, but there's still a very large barn there. And my dad always had an agreement with the neighbor there on the property that if he would maintain the grounds and mow them and keep them pristine for, for our family, that he could use the property for his goats, and also he could grow his vegetable garden out there. So it has always been used for that for years and years. And like Art said, the property right beside ours, Mr. Ryan's property, is residential, agriculture residential. And it seems like the creek that I've been talking about is the natural boundary where they made that designation differently. So I don't think I need all seven minutes of 47. So anyway, that, that is my, my request, and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Janice. Is anybody else that'd like to speak in favor? I'm sorry, I could not hear. Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll ask Commissioner Maxey for a motion.
I'd like a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Maxey to approve, second by Commissioner Wallace. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Last year Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Art, item three.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The next item we have is a request to rezone from suburban residential to heavy industrial for property located at 87 Shannon Road, Floyd County, tax parcel L-11W-106. Applicant owner is Floyd County and Bruce Ivy. The project description, this proposed rezoning is to be combined with surrounding parcels that are currently zoned, excuse me, currently owned by the Development Authority that are also, that are zoned heavy industrial currently. This is the parcel outlined in red, and Lauren, if you'd go ahead and go to the next slide. Thank you. Okay, so the purple is property that's currently zoned heavy industrial, so you can see that the property in question is completely surrounded by that. So the request would be to rezone, and then that way, all the zonings would match in that area. This also would take away the setback requirements, which would make that much more developable. Thank you. And here's one of you looking up the street. You see Bryce is actually placing the sign right there. And then this is looking into the property, and I think we have one or two more up on the other side of the street, and there's utility boxes that are currently there, and you can see the address listed on that first one. And then looking back, and then here is just a detail right there. I think what we have right here is showing with the arrows what the setbacks and so on would be, and that those would be taken out if the commission approves. And then this is the application. Mr. Chairman, this request has a recommendation from the staff for approval, and also comes to y'all with a recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission.
Thank you very much, Art.
Yes, sir.
We'll open the public hearing on item three. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in favor?
Yes, I'm Bruce Ivy, Floyd County Public Utilities and Transportation Division Director. This property was acquired as it was adjacent to an existing Floyd Gordon Development Authority property, and the natural process would be to rezone to HI to manage the surrounding property to help enable marketing of that property. We asked that you approve, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bruce. Is there any, anybody else that'd like to speak in favor? Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll ask Commissioner Maxey for a motion on item three.
I'd like a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Maxey, a tie by Commissioner Wallace and Commissioner Waters for the second. Is any further discussion? Hearing, seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Last year Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item four, Art.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The next item we have is a request to rezone from light industrial to suburban residential for property located at 32 Pierce Hill Road, Floyd County, tax parcel M-10Y-035. The applicant owners are Monty and Diane Slaughter. Mr. Chairman, this property is a residential property along Pierce Hill Road. There are several other homes along this street. However, the zoning map currently has this and several other parcels zoned light industrial. You'll see that in just a moment. The request is to rezone to suburban residential, which would do a couple things. One, it would match the use, and it's my understanding, or the department's understanding, that there was a sale that fell through, the cost of zoning being what it currently is, and the Slaughters, I believe, are looking at, wanted to try to get that property sold, and there's an impediment with the zoning. So that's one of the primary reasons. Thank you, Lauren. So you can see the property outlined in red, and we'll, thank you, Lauren. And so again, property outlined in red, the lavender color is light industrial zoning. Looking along Pierce Hill Road, the smaller lots that are along that road are all single-family residences. So that's something that we do need to correct. Now, of course, the Slaughters are here now for their particular one, but all those lots along Pierce Hill are single-family residential structures. And then across the street is the lighter yellow color is suburban residential. And here's looking, some of the houses there on Pierce Hill, so you can clearly see. Thank you, Lauren. And then this is looking down Pierce Hill, and then looking back toward the end of Pierce Hill there. And then this is looking into the property, and you see Bryce placing the sign right there. And then going into the application itself. And again, this comes to the commission with a recommendation from the staff for approval, Mr. Chairman, and also comes to y'all from the Planning Commission with a recommendation to approve.
Thank you very much, Art.
Yes, sir.
We will now open the public hearing on item four. If there's anyone here who'd like to speak in favor, please come, come forward. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition? Seeing and hearing none, we will close the public hearing and ask Commissioner Maxey for a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Maxey to approve item four. Second by Commissioner Waters. Any further discussion?
Right, I had a question real quick. A lot of these are zonings that shouldn't have been this way originally. When we do the ULDC upgrades and everything, are we going to address a lot of these issues? I know that it, we're seeming like we're running into it a lot more now than we have in the past. Like, that surely should have been agriculture. I grew up, I know exactly, the property she's talking about has always been farmland. But when we do the upgrade, is that going to address a lot of these issues so that we can identify them early?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Hancock, that's certainly our hope and our expectation, and that is one of the things when speaking with the consultants, that we have expressly made clear in regards to the, this type of zoning affix, you know, to properties that, where the use and the zone, zoning district clearly don't match. And so that's something where the consultants and their GIS team will be working with Ted and Jordan, our GIS team, to, as diligently as we can, to try to work through those. And we're going to be working with Danny's, Danny Womack's office as well, too, so we can look at the uses that are, that are on the tax rolls and so on, with the Tax Assessor's Office, so we can try to bring all the tools that we have to be able to try to, as best we can, with the 50-some-a-thousand parcels here in the county, to try to have the most appropriate zoning applied to the parcels. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Scotty. It's good, it's an issue we have to deal with a lot. Hopefully, that's going to be fixed. I've lost track of where we were. Have we voted on that one yet?
We've got a motion.
We have a motion in a second. Now we're ready to vote.
Okay. No further discussion, please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Last year Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Art, item five has a unique situation with it. Is this a tabling or a withdrawal?
Yes, sir. I did speak with Mr. Barxdale, current owner of the property. Mr. Barxdale did wish to withdraw the request. He actually meant to have done so prior to the Planning Commission, but was not, he just forgot, I think, just didn't get around to it. So I did speak with him a day or so ago, and I explained to Mr. Barxdale that since the, since the item is on the agenda, it would need to stay, and it would be at the wish of the commission as to the action. I think, Virginia, if I can, I think we might need to open the public hearing since it's on the agenda, so I will be happy to run.
And we've got to go through, I just want to get straight from you. Are you recommending withdrawal with prejudice or without?
Without. I would recommend without.
Without prejudice, okay.
Yes, sir. And speaking with Mr. Barxdale, it's going to be a while before he can get to it, but I would recommend without.
We got, got it.
One question, if I can, Mr. Chair. Was that request to withdraw submitted in writing?
I'm sorry, second.
Was the, sorry, was the request to withdraw submitted in writing?
It was through a text, and I have to check to see if Jay actually sent an email, too, but I did request that, but I'll have to, I know he sent me a text to that, to that effect, and he may have sent an email as well.
We just, the ULDC requires that a request to withdraw be in writing, so I, and I hadn't seen that, so I just had that question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, then your recommendation is without prejudice is correct.
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, we'll have to open, Art, you'll have to read it, and we'll have to open and close the public hearing, and then we'll take, take action on that.
Yes, sir. Item five is file number Z-220107 for property at 100 McHenry Drive, Floyd County Tax Parcel I-15W-209, requesting rezoning from office institutional to general heavy commercial. The planning staff recommends denial of this, and the Planning Commission had a vote to recommend denial by a vote of six to two. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this is the former McHenry School, if you're familiar, near Darlington. Mr. Barxdale was looking at wanting to rezone the property to heavy commercial for primarily for the use of mini storage, indoor mini storage. One of the concerns that was brought was from Miss, Miss Tuning, the fire marshal, is that the water service, water pressure is not sufficient in that area to be able to sustain to her requirements. And that was one of the primary drivers in regards to the staff's denial of the property, and I believe the Planning Commission as well. Thank you, Lauren.
Okay.
And so again, here's the school outline. I think most people are familiar with that. And then there's a manufactured home part that kind of is bounded by the property as well. And then here's looking into the zoning map, the light blue color being the office institutional, and then the pale yellow beige color being the suburban residential. And then here's a few pictures, looking into the school, and looking down, or up McHenry, and again, looking into the parking lot area in front of the school. Another view of the parking lot there, and this is looking a bit more toward Cave Spring Road. And back to McHenry again, again, looking toward Cave Spring Road. And looking across the street, there are a couple houses there, and another view there. And again, Mr. Chairman, this comes to the commission with a recommendation of denial from the, from the planning staff, and a recommendation to deny by a vote of six to two by the Planning Commission, and I'll, again, say that the staff's recommendation would be to table, excuse me, withdraw without prejudice.
Right. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
We will now open the public hearing, which is really a formality, but is anyone here who'd like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and I ask for a motion to withdraw without prejudice from Commissioner Maxey.
Make a motion to withdraw without prejudice.
Thank you. Have a motion, did you second that, Scotty? Have a motion by Commissioner Maxey, second by Commissioner Hancock, to withdraw this application without prejudice. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Last year Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have one more, Art.
One more for y'all this evening. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this is our annual readoption of our zoning, or our Unified Land Development Code and the accompanying zoning map. We do this every year. I have some numbers I'll briefly go over with you. These are combined numbers for the city and county for 2021. We have 71 Planning Commission cases. We have 17 special use permits, seven annexations into the city of Rome, 46 rezonings. For the Board of Adjustments, we had 43 applications, and for Historic Preservation, we had 14 applications. For text amendments, both of these were in the city. We had one that was an update to our craft brewery ordinance, and then one which we called the Omnibus Amendment, which was a series of several text amendments under one umbrella by the City Commission. Mr. Chairman, this has a recommendation of approval from the, certainly from the staff, and also from the Planning Commission, so we just ask for your kind of support for our annual readoption, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Art.
Yes, sir.
We want to thank your, your department. You do a lot of hard work, and sometimes it's contentious work, and we appreciate the professionalism that you and the planning staff show, and the way you make your presentations to us. So thank you for doing that.
On behalf of- On behalf of my folks, I couldn't do, I, I've told Sammy and Jamie, I can't, I couldn't do it without them, so on behalf of all our folks and everything, I, I appreciate that, and I'll accept that. And, um, we're, half of us are sick right now, so we're kind of down a little bit, so, but we do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
We will, we will now open the public hearing on this, this item, which is an annual item that we have. Is there anyone here to speak in, in, in favor of this proposal? Anyone to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll ask Commissioner Maxi for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Maxi, second by Commissioner Wallace to approve this proposal. Ms. Barton, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Last year Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now, we have one resolution tonight. This is to adopt a resolution by the Board of Commissioners of Floyd County, Georgia, to authorize the chair of the commission to execute the quitclaim deed evidencing the redemption of the property located at Floyd County Tax Parcel J 1 W 043.6, I believe, or a copy of which is attached hereby exhibited in, as exhibited as A. This is a redemption of tax property, which we're glad to see to get back on, up to, up to, up to snuffing on the tax rolls. So, is there a motion on this resolution?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Wallace, second by Commissioner Hancock to approve this redemption. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Last year Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Under the chairman's report, the only thing I have tonight, we had a wonderful thing happen to us in caucus tonight. The Rome Rotary Club, and Pete McDonald is their past chairman, came to us and donated five thousand N 95 masks for use in, wherever we need them in the county. I appreciate greatly the Rotary Club doing that, and they will be put to good use, and we have lots of areas that have requests and needs for them. So, I wanted to thank the Rotary Club and Pete for doing that. Under our next item, the commissioners' report, does anybody have anything that they'd like to bring up on any of their committees or the groups that they serve on for the county? Seeing none, Mr. McCord, do you have anything?
No, sir, no report.
Thank you. Ms. Harmon?
Just briefly, Mr. Chairman, I think the board wanted me to address in a general manner the status of ongoing open records requests and our efforts to respond to those in assisting the county. Of course, we had, I think, a record year in 2021 for the number of overall record, open records requests. And that's fine, because we want open and transparent government. Everybody agrees on that. I just continue, I think, last Monday, we received thirteen open records requests for the, for the week. I think we were at about twenty-four. So, I just ask everybody to continue to be patient. A lot of those open records requests, but certainly not all, still deal with ongoing community involvement with and concern over our elections office. They are in the process of moving physically right now, and we, we, again, that presents some additional challenges related to physical records within that office. Some of the records are in data form, and we can get to those quickly, but a lot of them are not. So, again, please be patient as we work through the next few weeks. We think that that facility and the organization that will come with making that move is going to make for a much easier process in regard to accessing those records. So, right now, we're making some conference room space available at my office for physical observation and copying and looking at records. We'll continue to do everything that we can, possibly can, to get to each open records request as quickly as we can, to let those making the requests know where they stand, and try to get those records to you as quickly as possible. Just bear with us, and if, if for some reason someone makes a request, and you don't hear from us, or at least acknowledgement, always pick up the phone or email me, and we'll, we'll figure out where it stands. We're, we take that very seriously. So, I just wanted to give a really brief report on that. It is a slow process. Sometimes it's an expensive process, and we just have to sort through it the best that we can.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Harmon. Appreciate that. Appreciate the work you do. It's not easy sometimes. Ms. Barton, is the consent agenda in order?
Yes, it is.
Consent agenda is in order. Do we have a motion to approve that?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Maxi, second by Commissioner Wallace to approve the consent agenda. Don't believe we have any old business, uh, excuse me. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Last year Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. We don't have any old business to, tonight, but we do have several items of new business, and I'll ask Mr. McCord if he will present those.
Yes, sir. Item one, consider recommendation from PAWS director to approve employment contract for shelter veterinarian with Dr. Daniel Nepp. Dr. Nepp has served as our vet of record for several years. This will bring him on full-time. He's also been our wellness program manager as well, as well as doing other required veterinarian services. This will actually save money in the operations budget with the, but there will be a slight increase to the overall budget for a net of thirty thousand, seven twenty-five. So, this is a recommendation to approve.
Thank you. Have a recommendation. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Waters, second by Commissioner Wallace to approve item one. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Last year Waters?
One hundred percent, yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item two.
Might add that the reason our PAWS staff's not here is because they're in quarantine or either positively affected by COVID, but they're doing, they're doing well. Item two, consider recommendation from Public Works to approve future closing of Rehoboth Road Southwest for the low-impact bridge design program, and it is marked in yellow as it was in your packet. This was actually discussed previously, but we have to take official action on the detour.
Thank you. Do we have a motion on item two?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Maxi, second by Commissioner Waters to approve item two. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Last year Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item three, consider recommendation from Pershing to approve funds in the amount of one fifty-six thousand, five hundred for the Edouard Skate Park renovation to be allocated in the 2022 budget from 2017 supplies. This project includes a budget revision to add sixty-five hundred dollars to the project for finishing of concrete. The project and funding of one fifty was approved at the November 9, 2021 meeting, but not can be completed until March 22. We also received a donation in excess of eighteen thousand dollars for the concrete to be donated to this project.
Thank you. Is there a motion on item three?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Wallace, second by Commissioner Waters to approve item three. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Last year Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item four, consider recommendation from Pershing to approve American Rent Company for the design and build renovations at the skate park at Edouard Park. As I mentioned in caucus, we did put this out for proposals and received no proposals, and landed on the design-build process. And again, recommendation to approve one hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of our 2017 supplies.
Thank you. Is there a motion on, on item four?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Wallace, second by Commissioner Maxi to approve. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Last year Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item five, consider recommendation from IT to renew agreement with Windstream for a three-year, or one-year contract with two one-year renew, renewals, and that will be pending final legal review of our county attorney. And this, this is presented pending legal review?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, we have, do we have a motion on, on item five?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Wallace, second by Commissioner Waters to approve item five. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Last year Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item six, consider recommendation from Pershing to approve purchase of a 2021 New Holland Power Star ninety-cap tractor and a 2022 Land Pride twelve-foot batwing rotary mower for the Floyd County prison, the amount of eighty-three thousand, four hundred dollars. This was budgeted at eighty-five thousand and is available on the lot.
Thank you. Is there a motion on item six?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Maxi, second by Commissioner Wallace to approve item six. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Last year Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item seven, consider recommendation from Pershing to approve the purchase of a 2021 Dodge Charger from Mountain View Chrysler Dodge Jeep in the amount of twenty-nine thousand for DA's office. This was budgeted at twenty-five thousand, and remaining funds will be paid from the DA's forfeiture funds, and that would be four thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion on item seven?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Wallace, second by Commissioner Waters to approve item seven. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Last year Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And item eight, consider request from Superior Court to approve quote from Ready or Not Incorporated in the amount of twenty-four thousand, four hundred and ten dollars for audiovisual equipment and upgrades at the Floyd County Jail for the first appearances room.
Thank you. Is there a motion on item eight?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Maxi, second by Commissioner Hancock to approve item eight. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Last year Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Under other business, we did go into executive session in caucus tonight to discuss one personnel matter, two real estate matters, and no action was taken. Is there anything else to come before the group?
I was going to ask, do you, would you like to have these pictures back? I mean, we've seen them. I didn't know if, if they would be beneficial for you to keep them.
I need one copy to keep.
Yeah, I was going to say, would you just keep one, all of them?
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. If no other business, we stand adjourned.